How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Sorry I bumped your camera.
I'm calling this meeting to order. Welcome to our town of Rhinebeck Town Board meeting for the season, March 29th. Would everybody please stand up to the flag?
...to the banner of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a meeting agenda and I'm going to take the agenda out of order because I'm sure many of you are here to speak about an issue that may not be on the agenda. So, I would like to tell you that we're happy to listen to you, we're happy to hear whatever you want to say. I would ask that you keep it cordial and no personal attacks. So, please come up if anyone would like to speak to us about any issue that is not on the agenda. State your name. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? No. Okay, I really don't need a mic. My name is Mike Burke. I'm the State Commander for the Veterans of the Foreign Wars for the state of New York. I'm here because all over the state, as small as Rhinebeck is, they've heard what happened here when you wanted to take down the POW MIA flag. You have to understand that we live as veterans. We honor the dead by helping the living. We have a senator who was POW, McCain, John McCain, who was criticized by the President of the United States, of course he got caught, okay, as a POW. You know, we have in this country, I think we have the greatest country in the world. And I'm a Vietnam veteran who received two Purple Hearts, the Bronze Star, and many other medals, okay? And when I heard this, and I got a lot of calls, that's why I'm here this evening, to find out exactly what is going to happen with the POW MIA flag, if it's going to remain up or if you're going to take it down, okay? And I would just like to give you a few statistics. I'm sure everybody in here has known someone who has been to Vietnam, perhaps who has died in Vietnam, as well as Iraq, Afghanistan, okay? All the wars that ended World War I, World War II, and that was the greatest generation of World War II, okay? The Vietnam veterans wrote the book on how every veteran behind us was going to be treated. And when our veterans went to Iraq and Afghanistan, I guarantee you wherever they deployed from, there was Vietnam veterans there to send them off, and there was Vietnam veterans there when they came home, because we was not going to sit back and watch happen to them what happened to us. To all my Vietnam veterans in here, welcome home. These are interesting statistics off the Vietnam Memorial Wall, a little history most people don't even know. There are 58,267 names now listed on that tall as black wall, including those added in 2010. The names are arranged in the order in which they were taken from us by date, and within each date, the names are alphabetized. It is hard to believe it has been 50-plus years since the last casualties. The first known casualty was Robert B. Fitzgibbon of North Wake, Massachusetts, listed by the US Department of Defense as having been killed on June 8th, 1956. His name is listed on the wall with that of his son, Marine Corps Lance Corporal Richard D. Fitzgibbon III, who was killed on September 7th, 1965. If you see the transition, the numbers in there, the father was killed in 1956, the son was killed in 1965. There are three sets of fathers and sons on the wall. Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-six on the wall were just 22 or younger. Eight thousand two hundred eighty-two were just 19 years old. The largest age group, thirty-three thousand one hundred three, were 18 years old. Twelve soldiers on the wall were 17 years old. Five soldiers on the wall were 16 years old. One soldier on the wall, PF Dan Bullock, was 15 years old. How that happened, I'll never know. Nine hundred ninety-seven soldiers were killed on the first day of Vietnam. Fourteen hundred forty-eight soldiers were killed on the last day in Vietnam. Thirty-one sets of brothers are on the wall. Thirty-one sets of parents lost two of their sons. Fifty-four soldiers attended Thomas Edison High School in Philadelphia. I wonder why so many from one school? Eight women on the wall killed nursing the wounded. Two hundred and forty-four soldiers were awarded the Medal of Honor during the Vietnam War. A hundred and fifty-three of them are on the wall. Beesville, Ohio, with a population of 475, lost six of her sons. West Virginia had the highest casualty rate cabinet in the nation. There are 711 West Virginians on the wall. The Marines of Mersany, they led some of the scrappiest high school football and basketball team that the little Arizona Concord Town, Morenci, 5000 and 58, had ever known and shared. They enjoyed wearing the Airbus, acquired the moments, they rode horses along Coronado Trail, stalked there in Apache National Forest, and in patriotic camaraderie typical of Mersany's mining families, the nine graduates of Mersany High School enlisted as a group in the Marine Corps. Their service began on Independence Day, 1966. Only three returned home. The buddies of Midville, Leroy Tafoya, Jimmy Martinez, Tom Gonzalez, were all boyhood friends and lived on three consecutive streets in Midville, Utah, on Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh avenues. They lived only a few yards apart. They played ball at Jason Sandlot Ball Field, and they all went to Vietnam in the span of 16 dark days. In late 1967, all three were killed. Leroy was killed on Wednesday, November 22nd, the fourth anniversary of John F. Kennedy's assassination. Jimmy died less than 24 hours later on Thanksgiving Day. Tom was shot dead assaulting the enemy on December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day. The most casualty deaths for a single day was on January 31st, 1968, 245. And that was probably when the Vietnamese started, the Vietcongs started their Tet Offensive. The most casualty deaths for a single month was May 1968. 2,415 casualties were incurred. For most Americans who hear this, they will only see the numbers that the Vietnam War created. To those of us who survived the war and to the families of those who did not, we see the faces, we feel the pain that these numbers created. We are, until we pass away, haunted by these numbers, because they were our friends, fathers, husbands, wives, sons, and daughters. There are no noble wars, there are noble warriors. And I ask Rhinebeck to let our POW MIA flag fly up there along with the American flag forever. We have these, what I just read to you, I was one of the lucky ones that made it back home for whatever reason, because I spent a month in a hospital in Japan and six months in a hospital in Walter Reed Medical Center. And none of us can figure out why God has us here, but He has us here for a reason. And maybe this is my reason. And I ask the town of Halle Park, I mean the town of Rhinebeck, I'm from the town of Halle Park, to please let our flag, POW. Thank you.
David. Thank you, Commander. I'm Dennis McGuire. I'm commander of Post 429 in Rhinebeck. I too, I'm a Vietnam veteran, '65, '66. Little do most of you know that from the National Commander of American Legion, Denise Serone welcomes us home today. It just happens to be Vietnam War Veterans' Day today, which Commander mentioned before. When many of the Vietnam War veterans returned to America, they were unwelcome. While we cannot change the actions of the past, we can show our support and gratitude today, something that should have happened 50 years ago, which brings us to the flag. The flag represents the families, loved ones that did not come home. And my question is, how did this happen? And who was involved in it? This was a hurtful, disrespectful event to our veterans and our POWs and our local Did anybody ever have to sit across the table from an empty chair on a holiday and wonder where that loved one is? Is he dead? Is he being mistreated? Has he lived all these years in solitary? Just think about those people that have to sit there on Thanksgiving and Christmas and look at those empty chairs. But they can look at the flag and know that our community cares. We have the flag flying. We have the flag flying at the Village Hall. We have it at the American Legion down at Crystal Lake. It shows this community cares about these people. They are not forgotten. The liberals and the political correctness that are destroying the great country, people come to Rhinebeck and they say, "What a beautiful little town." And we get here, "Well, let's change it to where I came from. Let's make it like someplace else. Don't leave it as Rhinebeck that we love." And that's basically what happens when you have only one party government. A year ago, I was at a meeting as commander, and I had to go through this because I was fighting with my members for our cross down at Crystal Lake, because one person came and complained they didn't like to cross at Crystal Lake on Memorial Day. Well, we won that one, and we're going to win this one. You can tell by the response, and we thank everyone for their response, 12,000 comments. I don't know, mostly you've read them? I'm not, I'm the dinosaur with my computer, and my son was reading this. I didn't miss the last meeting because I was in South Carolina with my son. I was getting phone calls in South Carolina from Florida, South Carolina, New York, North Carolina. What is going on in my town? My son filled me in on what was going on in this town. Yesterday, myself, the VFW Commander, Gary Rome, a Vietnam veteran, and trustee Howie Trout, and Howie Trout's got interest in this game. His uncle is laying in France, where he gave his life for this country. Think about those people every day, what they have to go through, every Memorial Day, every holiday. We met with Mayor Bassett. Mayor Bassett formed a five-member committee to look into Veterans Affairs in Rhinebeck. There will be a formal meeting on April 10th at 7:00 PM, which was proposed by Mr. Nederkorn that would want to have a public meeting on this, not how the last flags come down was handled. He wanted a public meeting on this and brought it up to the public at a public meeting. So, that will be on April 10th at 7 o'clock in the Village Hall. The mayor also said that on Sunday, May 27th, after our reformed church service that we always do every Memorial Day right across the town corner, that the village will be presented a POW flag, and it will be raised at this solemn service on May 27th, Sunday, for the Veterans' Day of Memorial Day. The committee will also suggest other veterans' activities, such as was brought up, a new flagpole at the Doughboy over here. We are going, the American Legion and the VFW of Rhinebeck is going to present the Village Hall with the POW flag, which will be raised by our members that day. And I would certainly like to see the towns involved in that. And if you people had taken the time to meet with us, we could have explained New York Executive Law, Article 19, Section 403A, that explains the POW flag flies the same days as the US flag. That's every day. And we will have avoided this embarrassment and the fighting in our once great town. It's very difficult to talk about experience in Vietnam. Look, whoever had to pick a friend and put him in a body bag, put him on a helicopter and get him away, get him home to his family, even the remains, I don't think we'd be going through this right now. And I'll give you a line from the Civil War. "Lives remembered are never forgotten." And if that flag is remember, remembrance to everyone that ever served or are ever missing, then the flag has to fly. I thank you.
Commander Burke, Commander McGuire, very, very happy to be here with you people. Very happy to be here with you people here tonight, experiencing the freedom that we provided for you. And some of us paid a lot, some of us didn't pay so much. But thinking of families who are still waiting 50 years later for their loved ones to come home, some even longer. We have POW and MIA from World War I, World War II. I was cheated out of meeting my grandfather on my mother's side because he died with a piece of German shrapnel in his back, long before I was born. My father lies at his grave with a chest full of asbestos that he got from a gun turret on the ship that he was assigned to in World War II. Every time they were in firefight at the ship, they would repack the gun turret with asbestos. That asbestos he sucked in, that killed him. They were able to match the asbestos, when they took the asbestos from his chest, they matched it to the asbestos that the government was using at that time on those ships. So, not looking for anybody that, any pity, we, most of us, knew what we were getting into when we did this. I have a son who decided at 18 years old, I'm 100% to say, from an accident in the military. My son decided at 18 years old, he was going to join Marine Corps. He went, came back 28 months later, out of his mind, injured. I haven't heard from him in three years. I don't know where he is. He's in a VA facility receiving treatment. Got traumatic brain injury, exposure to Agent Orange, Agent Black, Agent Blue, which is mustard gas, ionized radiation, polychlorinated by phenols, all in the name of fuel. And he, when he found out all this was wrong with him, he didn't really complain. When I wrote my father to Sloan Kettering when he was trying to see where he stood in his life, he didn't complain about it. They told him, "You got this when you were fighting for our country aboard that ship." I see guys here with some limbs and some bad backs and, you know, the scars that are outside, I'm sure that, you know, they're pretty easy to pick out, but the ones that are inside are the difficult ones. And for that reason, I believe we have to honor our veterans. But we have to carry it further, because the POWs and the MIA's were proven to be elsewhere. There are people, they could sit amongst us, speak the same language, wear the same clothes, look just like us, black, white, yellow, whatever color they were, they were Americans. We just had, I just received a phone call tonight, I was involved in another situation where a local sailor, local being from the Poughkeepsie area, was killed while serving our country in the Navy near Japan. He's there, he was there fighting terrorists. He was there because the guy that runs North Korea, whatever you might call him, has been threatening to send missiles our way. When those missiles come, I doubt that many of you people or yours were, you're going to go out there and want to fire on that missile. But I know that that man right there, the man next to him and the one next to him, the guys in the back, all of our people that have already served, will go again and say nothing about it, won't complain, they'll go. When they don't come back, we owe them. We owe them at least the honor of waving that flag. There is a flag code also that tells us how that flag, that one there, which many of our friends and relatives had died for, that flag means a lot, but that POW MIA flag means an equal, has an equal meaning. That flag tells us that people have not forgotten those that went before us or those that went, in some cases, with us. You know, I'm lucky, I guess, because maybe someday my son will come back. Maybe someday, I miss him terribly. I can't tell you how I feel, and I know that he came back alive. I just don't know where he is in the VA system now, and he's, once he got over 18 years old, they're not going to tell me. But I'm satisfied that he's being taken care of by our country, and someday he's going to walk back through my door. The people that have loved ones, relatives, friends, brothers, sisters, mothers, and fathers, believe and hope that one day they're going to get either that person walking back through the door or someone bringing some kind of light to where they are or what happened to them. And, you know, there's always hope, and some of that hope was, came from World War II, when 40-plus years later, they found some of the Japanese soldiers that had gone to caves to hide came out. So, when that, people start, people that are missing loved ones and sons or daughters and brothers and sisters, hear that these soldiers, these Japanese soldiers, had been in hiding for 40, 50 years, they say, "Well, now there's hope. Maybe my son, my father, my daughter, my, you know, whatever, was able to, was afforded the same forethought to find a place to hide, and maybe they're still hiding." The chance of that being is between slim and none, we all know that. But with our flag code, there's a lot more than just that flag, and it says POW and it says MIA, and, you know, it's the meaning behind it, the code that goes with it. We have, I think, which I saw in the paper, five or six days, that by law, the POW MIA flag is supposed to fly with the American flag. Give that some thought. You know, is that all those people are worth? Is that all they represented? They went out there and put their lives on the line, same as all of these people here. You see that were, that are former military people or military people, went out there and put their lives on the line so that you would have the freedom to come here tonight and have this meeting. And, you know, sometimes you think, "Well, those guys are dummies." They went and they fought and they died and they disappeared, and they came home crippled and maimed. I stayed home, got the best education, some people are thinking. I got, you know, some of the guys that didn't go into service at the time when we were all going into service, they got the best educations, they had the best jobs, they got the best women, you know? But in real, in reality, we provided that for them. So, now, those POWs and MIA's, those MIA's, were our friends, were our relatives, were our buddies, were people that we had trained with, people that we had fought with. We need to continue holding out hope for their families and their loved ones, that maybe if we keep the interest up, our government will get involved. We have some new techniques of identifying bones, the smallest bones we have, and as long as we're interested, we as a country are interested in finding out what happened to those people. I forgot, Mike, do you know the exact number of people from World War I, II, III, Korean that were POWs and MIA's?
No, I don't, but I know there's a lot of them out there, and I know, you don't know the work that goes into, when we go to Vietnam, they have, they go to, World War II was fought, they have remains being brought back to the day, okay? Vietnam, the work that goes into the archaeology, they depend on Vietnamese to say a plane went down here or something happened here, and they go over there and they dig. It'll take them months, and when they're digging to find the bones, they do it very carefully. It'll take them a long time because they want to bring back everything. And when a loved one, it's not too long ago, a World War II veteran got brought home. We are over there, our National Commander goes over there to Vietnam every year. Every year, he's over there, okay? And we have, we have a group that goes over there digging or trying to find the remains of veterans and soldiers who is over there. So, and it's a very long process, and it's a process that is done very carefully. So, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, like my comrade here said, what happened here in Rhinebeck is all over this country. When the commander here says he got calls, I was getting calls every day. Every day I was getting calls. Commander, you got to go down there to Rhinebeck, find out what's going on. And you don't know the arousal that you get when you get calls, you really don't.
I got calls from California and Arizona asking, you know, how can this be? I'm a guest here, although there is an extreme round corner with my name on it over by the school. My brother and I built the roads, some houses, things like that. I don't know whether that's good or bad information to tell you, but we, you know, all of us, all of us that have been, had experience with the military, no matter how big or how little, have the old cliche- have the old cliche stuff, have stared death in the face, we have. You know, and hasn't affected any of us, it's affected every one of us. But we're tough, we're real tough. But when it comes to these people, we can cry like beings and have a reason for doing it, because these people did what we tried to do, or did, they took part in what we were doing, only they didn't come back. And now, you know, when I got home, when Mike got home, when all, you know, Dad got home, whenever we got home, there were people waiting and saying, you know, a few people, our relatives, our friends, close friends, were waiting and saying, "Boy, we're glad you're home." The general population was saying, you know, "You're a baby killer, you're this, you're that," you know, without just spinning on us. I met, in, in Washington Airport, I was on my way home, I met a friend of mine that I grew up with. I grew up on Smith Street, Citi, Poughkeepsie, right in the hood. My friends were black, white, Hispanic, not too many Hispanic, but black and white mostly. I met a black kid that I grew up with in the airport. He was dressed in civilian clothes. I said, "Boo, where you going?" "I'm going home." I said, "Well, good. What plane taking?" "Well," he says, "We're a flying stand, military stand." "Why, which is customary?" "Me too." I was in uniform. I said, "Well, we can get, we can get out in plane together." "Uh-uh, I ain't right with you. I don't even want you sitting there." What do we, you know, we, we grew up together, we were kids together, grew all the way up. As long as you got them clothes on, I'm not going anyplace with you. I had to take my duffel bag, take my civilian clothes out, run in the bathroom and change in civilian clothes, for fear that he or I, or all of us, would be attacked by the general population in this country at that time. There was a big movement against us. No matter where we came from, no matter what we did, you know, I could, I could've told, anybody ask me, "Did you ever shoot a baby?" "No." But they're not gonna believe you.
But they, they don't know that the babies were stolen us.
That's right. I just took the words out of my mouth, Mike.
That's what they don't.
How many men did you see go and pick up a bundle of a baby and that whole thing blow up in his face? How many? How many times did that happen? Dan, how many times did that happen? And the people, some of the people that, that were involved in that stuff didn't come back. I, I don't wanna keep going and boring you with this stuff, but those people that didn't come back are represented by that POW/MIA flag, and that's all there is right now, except for the fact that honestly, our government has raised registry out there constantly, but it's thousands and thousands of people looking for my loot bones, anything, and DNA has helped us immensely, helped them immensely, to identify our, our brothers in arms. And, and hopefully, they claim now that there'll never be, the, the two of the unknown soldier is a spectacle that's absolutely heart-wrenching. It's wonderful to go and see it, I've been there, it, it's, it's just absolutely beautifully done by the services, but heart-wrenching, because you know there's somebody's brother, father, son, uncle, cousin, laying in those unnamed tubes that will never be identified, and, and supposedly we're done with that now, because of the, the identification factor. But we have the government out there now on our side, looking for people, doing whatever they can to identify people. My son had to submit to DNA evidence testing while, when he went into the Marine Corps, so that in the event they found him dead some twenty years later, or whatever, two days later, you know, or as, I mean, we're, we're used to, no hands, no arms, no head, that the body, his body could be identified. So now, all the service people are identified in that way. But it, it, this, this time of our man in service, for us, is never gonna be forgotten. My father used to walk around on the farm, and my grand, he didn't work on the farm, he went out and made, you know, a living elsewhere. My grandfather used to burn the rats that he killed in the burner barrel. And whenever my father would come for lunch, he'd step out of the car, he would smell that burning, and he'd start wandering around in circles, and just kinda move like I never saw him. And I asked him several times, "Dad, what's the matter? Not nothing, son?" Until I got to be about sixty, maybe fifteen, and, and he would kick the dirt a little. And that, that, at that time, that is, you know, probably eighteen years after he came out of service, after he come home. And finally, one day, I said to him, "Dad, why ain't you been doing this forever? I always ask you." He says, "Tell you the truth, when I smell that rat burning in that barrel, it reminds me of when that kamikaze hit our ship, and those boys were laying burning on the deck of our ship. That smell is what that rat burn reminds me of." And we all have that rat burn in someplace in our, in our, in our bodies. We do, we have. Please understand that there's no malice here. We are only looking forward for, and forward, to this, the issue being resolved for the people whose people, whose friends and relatives, brothers and sisters, so forth, did not come home, or have not been identified. And those people should be entitled to some closure on what's happened to their loved ones. I'm not gonna go any further. Thank you very much for listening.
Hi, my name is Nellie Fleischer, I'm a Marine. I'm sure you all agree that both boards made a huge mistake. At the village meeting, from my understanding, Gary Bassett said that flag was not coming down, it was gonna stay up, that was it, it was done, he didn't wanna hear anymore about it, it was gonna stay up there. So I don't know why there's a discussion that it might come down again or be moved, I don't know. And I, and my thing is, do you take it upon yourselves to do whatever you want and hope not to get caught? I don't know, because I was told that the village did this first, because one person came and didn't like the flag, they took the flag down, and then the town followed suit. I don't know. But apparently something happened, because the flags came down in both places. And Gary Bassett was asked, "Who did this?" He did not say, but he said it was only one person. And, you know, it's all over Facebook and everything like that, oh, but you might not know that, because you didn't know how to do the flag, and we have Google and stuff, so I don't know what you guys did. But I think somebody should be held accountable. Or, you know, they were asked over there too, "Would you like to resign?" Because, you know, the village voted you in to do the right thing, and this clearly was not the right thing. You can see it. You were trusted to do, do something, and there was no common sense in it, and I, and I cannot, for the life of me, understand why this would happen. And I wanna know what you're gonna do about it, and somebody should be held accountable I come from a family that's served in the service. My father in the Army, my brother in the Navy, my sister in the Army. My dad said, "What branch of service you going in?" I said, "I'm not going in any." "Oh, what, the war? I'm not doing it, you know, not my thing." But I will go to my grave to fight for every single one of them to have that POW flag on. And I thank every single one of them for everything they've gone through, because I've heard some stories. And I just find that the village board and the town board totally disrespected all of them. You're no better than Jameson, in my eyes. And something's gotta be done about it, you can't just poo-poo this. Thank you.
I'm a member of the Sons of American Legion for over twenty years, been on the village board for over nine years, and I voted no to take the flag down, I just want that reconciled.
I don't think this is working.
My name is Debbie Fiero, and, and, our father was a POW in World War II, and he was in Starlight VII and Starlight XI. Howie?
Yes, yes.
You have this picture.
Okay, I'm starting this one.
This is Howie's uncle, Roman Trout. I grew up next door to the town hall, and if you look a little closer, you can see the town hall up here in the, in the corner. He was killed in World War II, and he is now buried in Eppingol, France, which happens to be the same place where my father, our father, was captured. Here, Howie has a picture of three lined-up residents, who went to visit Roman's grave and Eppingol, France. Mike Pickle to the...
This is why I need help, because I'm trying to point these things out. This is Mike, Mike Pickle?
Yeah. He was a Vietnam vet, and two former POWs, George Davis and Ed White. They're both now deceased, Ed White lived to be a hundred and two years old. So we're sorry for all of them. They would like to have the flag removed. Thank you.
My name is Raymond Paulette. I'm a Vietnam veteran, my brother and I served in Vietnam in nineteen sixty-seven and sixty-eight. My brother died from Agent Orange and asbestos. He was only sixty-five years old when he passed away. The flag, as far as I'm concerned, the flag out there is to remember all missing and POW veterans, veterans in the whole country. There's probably twelve, fourteen thousand of them, am I right? Somewhere, somewhere in that neighborhood, there's twelve or fourteen thousand. They can't speak for themselves. I hope I can put in words what they would say to you guys right now. It's that, what we say, that flag is to help people remember who they are. They would probably tell you to leave our flag alone. Remember us. And that's all we ask, is to remember us. We gave our lives, so you could sit up here and do what you just did today. Sit in the back room and make this decision. So we die for that. All right, remember us, that's it.
Good evening. My name is Robert McCowsky, Commander of US Coast Guard, retired. I started out in the Connecticut Army National Guard. I learned the profession of soldiering from Vietnam veterans. That allowed me to continue my career, twenty-three years serving the United States. I'm normally a happy-go-lucky guy, I live in Reinbeck. I'd rather be at the beer store, seeing my friends, doing that kinda stuff, than get involved in this. But what I learned from those Vietnam veterans, and what I hold to this day, is a respect and for the flag, and for concern for POW/MIA, and I just wanted to stand up and say, as a member of this town, you know it's wrong, you know it was wrong, and so do I. Thank you.
I'm calling in from out in the village. I was a town hall member here for eight years. I have here the editorial from, not this week, but the previous week's Hudson Valley News, and the title is, "What Were They Thinking?" And one of the things that disturbs me about this whole affair is we had no chance to ever find out, really, what they were thinking. I couldn't find anything about this on agendas. There was, apparently not at a regular meeting, or if there was, I don't believe, was it taped? Was there a record of what you people discussed with respect to this? So actually, we will probably never know, never find out, really, what happened, both here and at the village. Because I don't believe the village did it at a regular meeting either, did they, Howie, or?
Uh, workshop.
Oh, okay, was that video taped? So we have no way of knowing what the real discussion was, any of these meetings. And it's just interesting to me that out of ten public officials, nine voted to take the flag down. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Frumnacker. I've lived in Reinbeck for sixty years. I came when I was twenty years old, and I wasn't a native, but I've learned that a lot of people aren't natives, but they are of Reinbeck now. When I heard this, that this had happened, I couldn't believe it. Brenda, Brenda Clapperth told me this on the phone. I said, "Brenda, come on, you're, you're dreaming. This couldn't happen," she said, "and happened. It's unconscionable that it's done without any input to anyone. It, it's unconscionable. It cannot happen again. It cannot happen again. We have to make sure that it doesn't happen again. If that means a resignation from the person or persons who got this idea to, and went ahead with it, I mean, they had the idea, and then they went ahead with it. It's unbelievable to me, and I can see on your faces and your reactions to these gentlemen, that it's unconscionable and unbelievable to you too. It's lovely to see us all here. At least we're standing, at least we're saying, not in our village, not in our town, hopefully not in our world.
I'm Ray Joyce, a veteran of the Korean War, so I'm probably the oldest veteran here right now. But that's what I wanna talk about. It's a spirit that I remember during World War II, 'cause I was old enough, I went to the age of Poughkeepsie, I saw the whole spirit of the town. And as I grow older, and, and we went through the war years, the kids from my high school, we worked on a war effort, everything was a war effort, and the veterans, they were top, they, they were treated like veterans that were fighting for the country. And then what's bothered me is, it seems like there's a trend, a trend that I notice as I get older, and my memory's still good, so I remember how soldiers were treated in those days, and how the spirit we had when the flag went by, and to see these changes nationwide. When I see millionaire sports players, they can't salute the flag, that millionaires, they're, they're set for like, there's no other country in this world, that they would be in that position. But then, and then I see a problem even where I live, there was some people that didn't like the idea, I flew the flag every day, every day. They tried to put a rule on where I live. They tried to put a rule on where I live, that, "Well, you should have the flag maybe 4th of July and Memorial Day." They didn't even talk about the Missing and Action Flag. But that, it's, every day, it seems so much harder to digest that this is happening to the country right now. And when I saw this about the Missing and Action, hard to believe, because I always looked to Reinbeck as the Norman Rockwell, my Norman Rockwell time. Because I remember that from the '30s and '40s, how Reinbeck was then. It could still be that way. Thanks give me the opportunity to tell you my feelings. It's coming right from there, believe me. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Robert Fitzman. I've been living here in Reinbeck for about 28, 29 years. I'm sorry my husband isn't able to be here. However, I have a long affiliation with the Marine Corps. He served in the Korean War as well. And there's a couple of things that strike me this evening. The information that Paul told us tonight is very big. The fact that the public wasn't there and that we knew nothing of a decision, as we say, by people who represent us. I think that that has to really be discussed and talked about as to how that changes in the future. I think the other big issue is, you know, you ask, "How is this happening?" Well, does that mean we have a board that doesn't know history or civics? I don't want to insult them. However, I'm just wondering, you know, when all these things that mean so much to us as a country are just being chipped away. I also believe that you have to answer to us, the voting public. So I'm of the belief that this is obviously is an open meeting. We need to have a meeting with you people to tell us your decision, how you did it, how you came about it, what you're going to do in the future to changes, so that something as big as this is never, ever done on a closed meeting or a workshop or whatever you want to call it. You have an agenda of about 20 items, and yet, nothing was done in an open meeting to determine what the public wants from this community, I think really is such a slap in effect. That's why I...
Hi there. My name is James Delolore. I think first of all, you know, I've been very moved by what I've heard tonight. This has been a very powerful meeting to come to. I don't know if you guys all experienced, but I came and I listened to the stories, especially of some of these gentlemen in the front rows. And it just made everything much, much more real to me. It made me feel very strongly, and I thank you for your service, your heroes, and I knew that coming in, and I appreciate it even more now after hearing what you all said. So thank you, and thank you for your service, and thank you for coming here tonight. I have to make a confession. I'm a Democrat. I have to make a confession, I voted for a lot of these people. I have to also say that my dad was a World War II veteran, and we spoke about World War II and that generation a lot, and it means a lot to me. I also don't agree with the decision to take down the flag. I wish this flag had stayed up and we were never in this place. And with all that said, I just want to say one thing that I think is important. You guys all fought, and your friends fought and lost their lives or had your lives impacted to defend our democracy and defend our freedom and to defend our ability to be here today. Let's not lose the fact that we're playing out democracy right now in this room, and this is exactly what you guys fought for. So that's a pretty amazing thing. I have one message that I want to say to everybody, which is, keep it civil. You can disagree, you can vote every one of these people out of office, you can think it was a stupid decision and a terrible decision and just the most wrong-headed thing in the world. Vote them out of office, that's democracy. Talk about this at a meeting, yell at them, like, that's democracy. Well, maybe not yell, but just don't allow that terrible, you know, the anger and some of the violence that we're seeing, that we're reading about, you know, when I look on the blog or look at it. Don't allow that to create nor communities. Make it constructive, make things change, and just, you know, keep it civil and keep it good on both sides, you know? So that's all I want to say. Like I said, I think it's great that everyone's here, and I thank everybody in this room for their participation. I thank you guys, because right or wrong, right, we're all trying. And I don't think there's a lot of malice in this, so just if it was, you know, like I said, we can disagree, but let's just keep it civil and let's change it, let's fix it. So thank you.
Again, Howie Trout of the Village Board. I'd like to acknowledge my father here, Korean War veteran, and Mr. Schroeder, who lost a brother to Vietnam. As Dennis said, the Village has a meeting on April 10th, and we have a plan, we're going to vote on this policy to go along with the Legion policy. We're going to vote yes or no, so we'll see on April 10th. I just want to know what the town board's plan is. Are you going to vote on this? Or are you just going to leave the flag up? Or are you going to have a policy?
We haven't discussed it. There was never a policy to have the flag up, so I think we do need one to have it up.
So that'll be done at a future board meeting or tonight, right now?
I think a future board meeting.
Okay. Just wanted to know the plans were... Because I think everybody, before you walk out of here, you should know what the plans are here. Okay, thank you.
How you all doing? My name is Fred DePaul. My family, from my mother's side of the family, has done a lot of history here in Reinbeck. My great-grandfather was Mrs. Delano's head caretaker. My great-aunt was a member of the DAR. Going through my time growing up here in Reinbeck, I did a lot of community service, and that through Boy Scouts, the pipe and drum, the Reinbeck High School. One of the best people that I've learned a lot of our history from was the Honorable Dewick Cornell. And I've left, dressed as soul, I learned a lot of our history in that through him. After I graduated from Reinbeck in '79, a bunch of my other classmates, we joined the service. I spent 10 years in the Air Force Department. I've come across other members, when I was stationed in Okinawa, who were Vietnam vets and POWs. You can't believe the hurt that I've seen in their eyes. Within a few months after my separation from the Air Force, I went to work at Castle Point, the VA hospital, where I've met a lot of World War II vets, Korean vets, Vietnam vets, and you can't believe the hurt in their eyes. The biggest thing I see is when people, when other groups come and did things for them down there, they would cry seeing the POW, MIA flag there, because they knew it represented their lost brothers and sisters. They didn't care whether they were black, white, and that, we were all there to serve our country. I am in touch with a bunch of my friends and from Reinbeck, and they are really outraged with this. And as you know, right now, there is, they've been putting up in the high school, a list of us veterans that graduated from Reinbeck. But the biggest thing right now is, please leave the flag up. My stepfather worked for the town of Reinbeck. He died from exposure to Agent Orange. Some of you may know him, George Bandike. He worked for the town of Reinbeck. Like I said, he died from Hep C that he got, exposure to the Agent Orange. And he is one of the biggest persons I know who would be turning in his grave outside of my great-grandfather, that he took that flag down. And that's all I got to say. Please leave the flag up.
I have just one more question. Funny question I have, and I didn't hear it, is, will this decision be brought up at a meeting or in your back rooms like you had the last one?
All of our meetings are in public, just because...
It wouldn't make the decision, wouldn't it? Because we wouldn't be here.
We always meet in public.
It wouldn't be here, we would not be here if it was done in public. Just answer the question. Would it be the next one?
It'll be, as all of our meetings are in public.
It will be done in public in front of everyone. That's all I have. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion for a policy now? We don't have one yet. Talk to me into the door.
Given that the actions that were taken were done without due consideration, I think we ought to write a policy that will stand up and we'll vote on it.
We can do one from the floor right now. I think that's what people...
Well, I put, have we written one?
Alan, we don't need to, we can do it from the floor. I'm asking, do you want to consider a policy from the floor?
I'll make the motion.
Whereas we have never had a policy for what, for MIA POW flag, whereas we are following the New York State guidelines that encourage us to fly the MIA POW flag every day that the American flag is flown. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
The motion carries.
Could you add in there, and add to it? The New York State Executive Law, Article 19, Section 403A. Can you add that for what you just said?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for being civil. And we have issued statements, our statements, I think, are here that we issued, and...
I'd like to commend you, thank you, and I know all of us in this country, when the word goes out, they will be happy.
Sir, do you have a card?
Yes, I do, it's in my car.
Or I'd like to be able to contact you.
Yeah, okay. I'll take it, it's in my car.
And I'd like to thank everyone who showed up tonight, the veterans, families of the veterans, and thank you for all your support.
Veterans, we're here. I'm going to continue to take some reading out of order, because we have two other important things that we're discussing. We have Tab Number Eight, Resolution 2018-096, the Hudsonia Biodiversity Assessment of Sepasko Lake. May I have a motion? Thank you, Ed, may I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Corinna Warden, the chair of our CAB, is here to talk to us about this. This resolution is in front of us because the CAB, the Conservation Advisory Board, has previously requested that we do a biodiversity study as our comprehensive plan in Arizona lays out for us. This is an important thing for us to do, and we should be doing it yearly. So Corinna, thank you, if you could speak to this resolution.
So the resolution is to fund the initial field study work that Hudsonia would do for the Sepasko Lake in order for us to prepare the written, it would basically, there's, in order to become a critical environmental area, there are five steps. First, you have to prepare a written document, describe the proposed area and the special environmental features of concern. So this is a resolution to give us the money so that Hudsonia can do that, because I am not a biologist. None of us are biologists, I think, on the CAB. And then, there's a public, publish a public notice that describes the proposed boundaries, and then we have a public hearing, that's step three. And then step four would be the town board adopting this critical environmental area after the public meetings. And then we would file the map with the registration for the DEC, and it would go on the website of all of the critical environmental areas of Hudson Valley, which if you look at, it's sort of sad, they're all, yeah, they're all old landfills. So it'd be nice to have a lake in there and talk about the fish and the birds.
Corinna, did you, were you able to speak to the homeowners association as well?
I did, I had a good conversation. I don't know if that's the homeowners association.
Well, I'm a member of the homeowners association, but I don't represent the homeowners association. I'm the head of the Sepasko Lake Preservation Association, which is all property owners.
Are the homeowners aware of what we're doing? And I mean, this is, in our minds, a good thing. This is...
Well, let's, I might talk about this at some point, or will you...
Okay, so basically, this is what the resolution is about. Why Sepasko? The comprehensive plan states that Reinbeck will designate number one in the list as all perennial stream corridors and other surface water resources in the town as critical environmental areas. And then it goes on to all aquifers and recharge zones, all scenic roads, scenic view sheds, historical landscapes, historical town roads, the Hamlet of Reinbeck. I mean, it's pretty ambitious. So we haven't started yet, and it's, the comprehensive plan was finished in 2009. So, you know, let's get going, we got to get started. So that's what this is all about. And, okay, I see the floor to, yes.
My name is Earl Harris. I live 308 Sepasko Lake Road in Sepasko Village, and I'm a resident and a homeowner in the association. My wife is actually on board. We, many years ago, formed a Sepasko Lake Preservation Association, which teaches the property owners around the lake, with the purpose of trying to protect the lake from outside of environmental impacts and also to improve the quality of the lake, which is experiencing a number of environmental impacts. So we've been monitoring the lake for 20 years, in the city's Lake Light Assessment Program and the New York State Federation Lake Associations. I had 20 years of data, eight times a summer, I collect water samples and I send them up to Albany, and I get an annual report on the quality of the lake. We've worked with Hudsonia, Eric Kivian in the past, Kerry, as well as the DEC Department of Water, which has lake specialists who have given us a lot of advice. And then we've hired a number of lake management consultants through the years to give us advice on how to manage some of the things that we're dealing with, which the primary thing is invasive weeds and also harmful algae blooms, and as well as things that various property owners want to do that sometimes aren't always in the best interest of the lake and the quality of the water in the lake. So with that as a background, I just would like to say that I found out about this meeting by accident, and what I think is really important, as you go around to, after Sepasko Lake, to any other lake or stream or whatever, that the property owners be contacted, be aware that this process is going on, and that perhaps something be written up as to, why is this process going on? Because my first reaction was, what's this all about? And what I would still have some questions is, supposing in the course of doing this Hudsonia study, you determined that we're a CPA, and... Hudsonia study, you determine that we're a C P A, and meantime, I have a permit in to put a chemical in the lake to treat Eurasian water milfoil, are it's the board, or the C A B, or Hudsonia, or someone else other than us residents of the lake going to make a decision, other than the D E C, about whether or not we can treat the lake? I have an active application in now to pull some lily patch in the lake. Another year or two, I suspect that we will have to treat for Eurasian water milfoil. So, I do have questions about local control and our ability to manage the lake. There are many divergent opinions. We argue a lot about what's right and what's wrong. Sometimes we make mistakes, but I want to know how many new players are going to be involved in that process and that discussion.
So, I don't believe that the town board has any jurisdiction over the lake. What, what we would do would be funding a study. I believe that it's still under the management of the D E C, so--
So, should I come up here? So, C E A, sorry, I just said this before. Designation of the C E A provides no automatic protection. It merely draws greater attention to the importance of the area and particular features of concern that should be taken into account in locating and designing new projects, conducting environmental reviews, or making regulatory decisions. It does not extend or restrict the permitting agency of any agency, but it just helps to ensure that features of concern are duly considered in land use planning reviews and decisions. So, it basically goes under Type One action under Seeker. So, it just puts more of a spotlight on it, but there's no teeth to the spotlight, as far as I understand it. And it would still be the D E C that would manage their relationship with the lake.
Warren?
Is that a terrible way to put it?
Not quite.
Please correct me.
Once you designate it as a C E A, then the potential impact of any Type One or unlisted action under Seeker must evaluate the environmental, the environmental, the impacts of whatever project you're, you're doing on the environmental characteristics of the C E A, which will be identified in the report. So, can, it would be, there would be some control over that process if a permit is requested from the town. If a permit is requested from D E C, we're not an involved agency. We may, we may not be a part of that process. But it would, it adds heightened scrutiny to whatever action you're taking that's going to affect the lake. So, it is a, it is, I can see where it would be a concern to the homeowners around that lake. So, I just want you to be aware of that fact that--
Yeah, directly. How, how can we look into this more before we decide if we want to do this?
Well, you're going to have a public hearing, and--
Well, that's part of the process.
And then, the homeowners, I assume, will come in and investigate it, and they will make their concerns known about whether this should be--
Yeah, I'm saying aside from the public hearing, which is part of the process of where people will be noticed that we're having a public hearing. Can we have Hudsonia here to speak, or the D E C, to answer questions that could come up in the public hearing? Do we just listen to all the questions and maybe do a follow-up meeting?
My question is, if it's just higher scrutiny--
Hold on, hold on, Corinna, hold on. No, I ask you a question about the best way to have a process for this.
What I'm saying is, I think before you spend $4,200--
Yes.
--and retain services of Hudsonia to do a biodiversity study and do all the mapping, you really should have, make an informed decision that this is something that you want to go forward with. I'm sure Hudsonia's report is going to indicate that there is significant biodiversity and habitats that need to be protected in the lake. There's no question about that. So, we know what the result of that investigation is going to be.
Could we assume that--
I think you might want to put this out to the neighbors, because this is a situation where the, the lake that you're protecting is essentially part of, I think, the Sepasko homeowners. Don't they all have rights to the lake?
The Sepasko Homeowners Association is one entity of which--
And there are a couple of others, probably.
--there are 58 landowners.
Or how many others?
Then there's the camp. Then there's the camp. And then, there are one, two, three, four, five other property owners, something like that.
And I'm just suggesting that before we go forward with this and invest the money in the study and then find out at a public hearing that there is some real objection to it, maybe we can have sort of a public hearing, and maybe Eric Kiviat or somebody from Hudsonia can talk to us about what the ramifications are.
Do you mean an actual notice, public hearing?
No, you could just put it on the agenda for a, that it's going to be on the agenda, and they would be invited to--
I know it's difficult. I don't know how you solve this problem, but putting a notice on the agenda--
Doesn't work.
This is on the agenda. Do you check the agenda for, for all the possible social organizations that might have an influence on your life every week to see if they're going to talk about your neighborhood?
Well, I check the agenda of the town board, but maybe you don't. But maybe, maybe we should put a flyer out.
I think, you know, if you're going to do Sepasko Lake, or Round Lake, or Crystal Lake, I think you should make an attempt to notify those people that something is happening of importance to them.
How many homeowners are around?
C E A plus four plus one. I have a question, though. So, if there's just added scrutiny, what's the legislative teeth of this? Like, what are they objecting against? If it's like a higher--
Well, I mean, we're talking about putting chemicals in the lake--
But that's a discussion between them and D E C. The town doesn't get involved.
And the D E C-- And the C E--
The C E A could very well note that there are invasive species there that aren't healthy for the lake. It could help you as well as hinder you, so--
It's possible.
Yes.
But I, I don't know if Eric is here tonight, but I know that Eric is completely opposed to ever putting chemicals in--
You're, you're going to have a problem. The thing that you're doing to protect that lake now, you may run into problems in doing the same thing once it's a C E A, or just--
But where would that problem come from, is my question.
It would come from the list of criteria that have to be followed.
The permitting authority, which, I don't know where you, it might, it might be--
It's the D E C.
It, it might be D E C. I don't know.
Because the C A B's not going to tell them about it.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing, Ryan Dunn, County Observation Advisory Board, what the HOA does for Sepasko is they do a hydroraking, and correct me if I'm wrong, for the algae and the, you know, no, it's not a hydroraking.
We have a permit in to do hydroraking for lily pads. For lily pads. We have a permit in, it's taken, it's taken, we're in our second year trying to get this permit, and so--
And that's, that's a D E C per, permit. Only anything that would trigger for the town would be the wetlands per, permit. That would be it. The wetlands law.
But you're not hearing what I'm saying. If it's permitting required from D E C, once it's a C E A, there'll be heightened scrutiny by D E C for that permitting. That's fine. I just think that the homeowners should have an opportunity to understand that before we go ahead and designate this piece of property--
Oh, well, then, yes, obviously. Okay.
I think it's only fair.
The D C has teeth.
But the homeowners will be here twice then.
Well, no, first, it doesn't make any difference to spend the money if you don't want to do it.
But the town has to establish lead agency status through Seeker to establish the C E A, and therefore, there's a whole other string of public hearings where the homeowners would have the opportunity to come out and talk. So, do you want to have a public hearing beforehand to talk about--
Yes, I think that's what we're saying. You want to have an informal public hearing, they didn't put them in residence.
So, we're going to, we're going to cut off the money. No money cut off later before you--
No, well, we, why, why spend the money if--
Hold on, just--
Because I, I think--
Okay, please, Ryan, stop. What I think we're being asked to do, and what I think we want to do, is get the homeowners in the lake involved before we go any farther.
And I'm happy to make a brosure.
Hold on, Corinna, hold on. Is that what everybody here wants to do?
Sounds reasonable.
It seems so.
I think we'll ask our, our secretaries to notice them, and we'll put this on the agenda for further discussion.
I think the conflict is, we're going to lose Hudsonia, because they start making their--
Then, you know what? We can't rush a decision and cram it down someone's throat. We've got to get some input. If we lose them, we'll have to wait.
Why would you lose them?
Because they, they schedule municipalities, clients, months in advance, and rarely, when you want to do this review, is the summer. It's June through August, all depending on how many volunteers they have and the staff they have. Because really, it's, it's, if Eric isn't doing it, it's Gretchen Smith and one other biologist who's doing the work, the field work. And once you, once they're full, that's it. You, you don't get it.
It's released next year.
So, I didn't catch your name.
Carl.
Carl, C A R L. And that's Paris, Lake Paris, France, the two R's.
When they did, Hudsonia did this biodiversity study for the whole town, did they omit Sepasko Lake from the--
They didn't have time. They did not have the money to do Sepasko. All they did is they mapped it on the very big map.
Okay, so we don't have a plan?
We have nothing yet. And that's sort of the other reason--
We have one, we have one critical environmental, we have White School House Road.
No, the money was never put forth to do, to do that. It was on the docket, and the money would never follow through for White School House.
No, all I'm asking is that, at one time, Hudsonia did a biodiversity study for the whole town, but I seem to remember that we omitted Sepasko Lake.
It's just a lake. It's a water body, and that's, that's all. And the other reason for the C E A was there was a planning matter that I think if the town board, at least the town planning board, had some data or factual information, biology, habitat, water species, bird species, that the incidents that happened with that land or probably could have been avoided.
You're talking about the beach that was put in?
Yes.
And, and will they be doing the mapping that we need for the, to file this?
Yes, they will do, they will fill step one.
And, and will that include more than the lake, it's, lake by itself?
No, it will be the lake. And I doubt they're going to go any further on anybody's residents other than the shore shoreline, because we've only included that they monitor the species, bird species, the amphibious species that have at the lake and the shoreline. So, and really, where's Sepasko? That's 25% of the lake. We have a whole other lake up further towards where it begins, and nobody has any information on that. I mean, there was some mentioned during the planning board hearings of heron species, the Blandings turtle, you know, but we, we, we don't know. We don't know.
That lake that you mentioned is in the town of Island.
Where Camp Ramapo is? I'm talking about the very top of Sepasko Lake, where it, where it's--
Where the city's--
Sorry, it's where the weather's a wetland up there.
I don't believe that's in the town of Island, because this past summer, the town of Island pulled the Beaver Dam out of a culvert just off of the White Road, with a stream that runs into Sepasko Lake.
And that flooded, yeah.
And it flooded and did, did some significant nutrient pollution to the lake. And the town, the highway superintendent said, that's not our problem.
So, they couldn't have done it if there were the critical environmental--
So, that's--
Are you comfortable with us moving forward and noticing the--
I, I--
Can I just finish?
I, I'm a big believer--
Carl, can I finish?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Are you comfortable with us moving forward and approving this and then having the one public hearing be the part of this, so that we don't lose scenic Hudson? Or are you opposed to this? And would you like, here's another resident of-- just, we need some guidance.
I, I, I think that we deem a public hearing as good notification.
So, the public hearing would be a part, if we approve this tonight, the public hearing would be a part of this process?
I, I'm a big believer in collecting data and having scientific data to influence decision-making. That's one of the reasons that I push so hard to do all this monitoring for all these years, because a lot of residents have wanted to do a lot of things that would have caused damage, and we had the data that we were able to deal with. I am concerned, though, that if they find a Blandings turtle, that, which is a good chance for us.
Well, they find, as I understand it, an environment they could allow land. If we really find Blandings turtle, if we can find an environment that could support a land--
Right. Then, there's going to be a debate, perhaps, between scientific people who are on different sides of the fence about whether or not we can ever treat the lake for Eurasian water milfoil.
Okay.
So, I, 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 I like the idea of the C E A, but now it's in my backyard, and I'm nervous about it. So, I'm trying to balance it, so.
Peter, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Hold on.
416 Sepasko Center Street, Sepasko. So, I just wanted to say, I was talking to Carl earlier, we didn't know anything about this. My wife used to be the president, she just resigned, and I believe it's Nick Staley's act of the president. So, I'd like to see a letter go out to at least our association board members, and then hopefully all the homeowners, because Carl and I, again, we just found out about this, and before you take the next steps, please let us all know.
So, then, let's--
That's what I'm asking. The community's, they don't know.
Let's, please get in touch with Eric Kiviat, thanks, and see if he can't wait. We'll get this for our next meeting. The end of the vote. We'll notice all of the homeowners. We're only attending--
The vote is adjourned.
Yeah, it won't be ready for April night. We'll have to notice them for the 23rd or whatever that meeting is, and we'll have to have it on the agenda then. All? I just wanted to say that there's probably value in doing a study, even if you don't need to have any of that information.
I agree with that.
That's a good point. Can we do one without the other?
Yes.
Sure. Sure. But I think that, I think that we've heard that the neighbors want to be noticed to let us know, and that's a good point, that we could do, gather the data and not have critical environmental--
I just sort of want to speak about the plan that's rolling out. And if that's what this information case is looking for. Under zoning law, when you read it, there's a--
Michael?
Yes?
No, we're, no, we're just--
Get the prop. Under zoning law, we have pages and pages of detailed information, detailed requirements for habitat assessment, which we're required to do. We need that information to do our job. Under Seeker, we're required to take a hard look, which includes going to all this extent. I had to speak with Carl about this. The beach project that went there, D E C had already permitted it, and we didn't go forward. I spoke with the D E C, and I said, okay, I'd let you know, what studies did you do? What information did you get? What did you get? And she said, okay, yes, well, I'll send it to you. They sent me nothing because they didn't do anything. They just went out and looked and said, yeah, there's a good beach there. So, we required the applicant to actually hire a biologist, a naturalist, to actually do a habitat study for that specific area, not the whole lake, just the specific area, as the law requires us to do. And the information came back such that it was not felt that in that immediate area there was anything that would be negatively impacted. But if the C E A was there, or at least the information's there, we'd already have that, and it would cost the applicant for that. The applicant had to pay for that. If a homeowner wants to do something on Sepasko Lake, if we don't have that information, that applicant, under escrow, is going to pay for a habitat study, because we're required by our zoning law to make sure that happens. So, at least having information there is helpful. A C E A really should be something that basically draws our attention to something that we have to have that information anyway. We're going to look at it that way anyway. So, I don't, honestly, it can hurt you. I think it can save money in the long run. I think it can, you know, be very helpful all around. Sometimes projects are going to be proposed around some of our more lovely areas, which you may not want there. And having this information could be the one way to ensure that it doesn't happen. So, yeah, it can be a two-way sword. It's critically important that you involve the people, though, just as we did with the comp plan. We had, we had visioning sessions, we had, we went to different areas, like the Wurtenberg, Sepasko, all these different areas. If you're going to do something like this, which is going to have an impact on this community, and I think it will be a positive one, but anyway, you've got to, you should go actually out there. I think they have meetings, homeowners' meetings. Maybe the camp would even be willing to sponsor somebody, go and say, okay, what is the C E A? What are we looking for? What is the impact? How does this impact our zoning law? How does it impact planning? And just have information needed, so that people are aware of it, because the biggest problem we have, I think, is fear of the unknown, and I don't blame it. Blame people for feeling that way. But once they understand the process, understand how it works, they're going to work with people, all of a sudden, okay, they're not afraid anymore, they can participate actively, and you generally come up with a much better result. So, I think that's the first step. You've really got to go out there and do informational needs before you actually move forward. So, I think the study should be done, because you're going to need the data one way or the other.
Even if it's not a critical environmental--
Absolutely. We're going to need that.
Well, I think that we need to notify the homeowners and get this on our agenda for the last meeting in April. And can you just let Eric know that that's what our schedule is?
I'm really sorry, as the C.A.B. dropped the ball, I'm sorry. We should have had a better job communicating. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Can you please draft a letter that we can send out to the homeowners? And if you'll get it to Ed and I, we'll ask that either our planning or, or the clerk, someone will have to get it out for us. We'll rope someone in.
No, usually we're Tuesdays, this was a rescheduled.
No, we're Mondays.
I mean, not Tuesdays. I needed that it's not Thursdays.
It's the 23rd, Corinna, we're asking for the homeowners.
Is that a problem for you?
Yeah, I'm out of the country.
Regular town board. Well, can someone else, I mean.
Otherwise, we're out today, so.
Yeah, I think we have to do this sooner rather than later. We could shoot for the 9th if we think we can get the letter out.
Yeah, I mean.
April 9th.
Yes, can you email your whole homeowners' association and let them know? Let's shoot for the 9th then.
Not only the, all the property owners, not just.
I mean, yeah, we'll notify all of the property owners around, but I mean, if people can't make the meeting, maybe other people from the homeowners' association can fill them in. And let them know that, you know, we'll let them know that even if we're just gonna collect the data, we may not do a critical, we may not have a designation for critical environmental area. Corinna, can you get me a letter tomorrow?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're gonna table this.
This is tabled. Okay, thank you, everybody. Another big thing that I wanted to talk about was the proposed Amtrak waterfront fencing, tab 13, and I put some handouts up there. I just want to let everybody kind of know the sequence of events with this. On March 5th, Matthew Marsigliano, who is from the coastal resource specialist from the New York State Department of State Office of Planning, Development, and Community Infrastructure, emailed our clerk, who was away on vacation, to let her know that they were considering putting up fencing. I was not copied on this, it was sent to the mayor of Tivoli, it was sent to the clerk at Red Hook, one of our town clerks here, and I never received it until our clerk got back from vacation on the 12th, and it was forwarded to me then. When I got it on the 12th, I think I forwarded it to all of my town board meetings, our C.A.B., our planning board, our zoning board, and our attorney, and our land use attorney. And right after that, we got a resolution. I also have been emailing Matthew Marsigliano, the planning, New York State Department of State Office of Planning and Development, and playing a lot of phone tag. And what I've requested is that we really need a presentation here from Amtrak for them to tell us exactly what is going on. There are five, six, seven communities involved with this, it's the Dutchess, it's Reinbeck and Tivoli, and then there are German Town and Stuyvesant, maybe four others in Columbia County. And we really don't have a, it would be great to have a public presentation of what they're doing. So anyway, after finding out about this on the 12th, we quickly passed a resolution at a special town board meeting on March 19th, calling for them to halt this and to extend their comment period, which was supposed to be up today, the comment period has now been extended to May 1st. We also drafted a letter to Matthew Marsigliano, showing him this resolution and calling on him to have Amtrak come and present to us. We also forwarded this to the Dutchess County Department of Planning, Owen Rafter, and he and the county executive have also drafted a letter. Corinna Borden, our chair of the C.A.B., as the board that oversees our waterfront advisory committee and our local waterfront revitalization program, of which we are a member, did a draft consistency review, and we're going to have that on our website and on our Facebook page with all of the pictures. We've also quoted the policy that's on here. Big in the LWRP, we believe that this has to go through our planning board process in order to get permission to be put up. So we are going to insist that the process that we've laid out be followed. We are going to try and get Amtrak here to make a presentation, having seen what they're proposing, they're really proposing gates, and gates by the water treatment plant, and gates through different portions near the parking lot of Reinbeck. Again, we'll have this all on our website and our Facebook page. It doesn't look like more fences going up, but these gates could hinder any access for people wanting to cross over Amtrak or CSM, CSX, whatever they're called, to bring canoes in or anything like that, and that's something that concerns us.
Or emergency response. You know, I mean, if the fire department needs to get to the river for one reason or another, or if there's a train problem.
Yeah, so this all concerns us. We are looking for more information, we don't have a lot of information, and that's what we know right now. The comment period has been extended, we do want a presentation from Amtrak. And the other thing that everybody should know is that Amtrak does not currently own the station right now, the county does, was taken for non-payment of their annual oriental taxes. So we're in a whole other issue with Amtrak because they're unable to make their ADA compliances because they don't technically own the station. So we've tried to get the county and Amtrak to sit down with us to, to get them on a pilot program to pay their annual oriental taxes and turn the station back over to them and hold their feet to the fire to fix some of the infrastructure there, which we've been talking to them about. So it's a slightly complicated issue. We don't get a lot of, we have no communication from Amtrak, and we're looking to the state to help us with this, so that's where we are. Warren, do you have anything to add? Or that's all we wanted to keep you for tonight.
Right. So the consistency, draft consistency review is on the website?
Yes. And can I say one thing? I made a comment that said it would not hinder pedestrian traffic due to the lightly wooded areas adjacent to the gates, which is a little tongue in cheek and probably not something I should have.
It's never good to be tongue in cheek.
I know, terrible idea, very bad idea. So can, can I, since you've, before we propose that, so I can just.
No, you need to re, yes, if you send it to me as a JPG and a PDF.
JPG PDF, I'm gonna get rid of that.
Yes, no tongue in cheek, irony is always bad.
Bad idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Government, bad idea. I'll do it tonight, I'll give the letter.
When's our deadline?
May 1st.
Okay, moving right along here. I'll make the most room for Resolution 2018-089, our preliminary accounts, payable abstracts, vouchers, 377 through 405, 21 checks, total of $50,000.153. May I have a, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-090, our capital five checks, abstract one check, May I have a second? Second. Thanks Brennan. Alan, did you sign off on this?
Yeah.
Thanks Warren, thanks Carl.
Thanks.
You approved it?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2018-091, hiring part-time highway secretary, may I have a motion? Thank you, may I have a second? Wesley Hill is being hired as the part-time confidential secretary of the highway department for up to 25 hours a week, a salary of $15 an hour, and it can go up to 16 after observation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Tab 4, Resolution 2018-092, recreation programs, acquaza and boot camp, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey, and a second.
Second.
Thank you Brennan, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Looking for a motion for Resolution 2018-093, certificate of attestation of exemption from New York State disability benefits covered in connection with the town's application to the Dutchess County Department of Health for a pool permit.
Motion.
Thank you Chauncey.
Second.
Thank you Brennan, is there any further discussion? This is pro forma that we. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Looking for a motion for Resolution 2018-094, training program for supervisor and bookkeeper. Thank you Alan. Thank you Ed. This is for us to attend the annual New York State Comptroller's Office Supervisor's and Bookkeeping class, where we always learn something great in May. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Looking for a motion for Resolution 2018-095, revised prices for the 2018 summer recreation program.
Motion.
Thank you Chauncey, Brennan, second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Looking for a motion for Tab 9, Resolution 2018-097, for brush drop off.
Motion.
Thank you Brennan.
Second.
Thank you Chauncey. Any discussion?
This is what we do every year.
Yeah, we do this every year, but we raised our minimum wage.
Oh, so we should adjust this too?
I raised that for discussion. We raised our minimum wage to 15.
Yeah, we should change it, yeah.
And it's only, it's only for what, a month?
Yeah.
Two months? How long is?
Through, through November or the first time it snows.
It's a day every month for brush drop off.
Okay, so we're talking about 15 bucks or something. Let's do it.
Motion to amend the salary to what we have amended our minimum wage to, which is $15. May I have a?
Second.
Brennan, motion? Ed, second. Thank you. All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
We have a motion in front of us, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Looking for a motion for Resolution 2018-098, change of insurance broker for the town vision insurance policy. A motion? Thank you Chauncey, may I have a second?
Sorry.
Thank you Alan, this is, again, pro forma, it is a new broker services for our vision policy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2018-099, construction walls for town hall basement offices, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you Ed, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Who put this together?
I worked with Bobby, and we talked with Larissa.
Who's building this? Who in the highway department? I thought.
As far as I know, Bobby.
Bobby's maintenance. Well, this says highway department can do the necessary construction work. Is Bobby going to be doing this by himself?
Bobby's gonna do it with help from highway.
I'd like to extend the ceiling on this so that if it goes over, we don't have to come back. What are we doing without carpeting down there?
We're waiting, we're trying to, we're scheduling two appointments.
Okay, thank you. And we'll have samples to see.
But that's, yes, and that's.
This does not include?
Doesn't include.
No.
No.
Carpeting will be more than this. And is there a door in this? Do we have a plan?
There is, yes, there has to be a door in that wall.
Hold on.
Not for, not for Larissa, but for Ed's office, there has to be a second exit, so they have to be able to get into, because their window is not.
I'd like to have, I'd like to see a schematic for this that we approve.
Sure.
I'd like to make this contingent upon a schematic, and I'd like to raise the ceiling to $2,000.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
$2,000.
Yes.
What?
Yeah, she really needs it because it's too loud.
No, there's no carpet in this, this is just for the walls. I don't, we're consistently underbidding, and then we won't be able to proceed, we'll have to wait for another meeting, so I think we should say not to exceed $2,000.
And the schematic will be approved by a supervisor.
Yeah, that's good. I'd approve that.
Okay, thank you. You got that, John? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
I'll draw it tomorrow.
Thank you.
I mean, Ed, unless you, that's a paper. If I draw the wall for Elizabeth.
And just, who's permitting this? The village? We're getting, we have to get this permitted?
Oh.
We have to get permits in place, I want them to sign on with it.
I can check.
Resolution 2018-100, purchase of kitchen equipment for recreational park, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
This Recreation Director House recommended that we purchase this, $200, deep fryer, flat top griddle, ice cream freezer, microwave mini fridge, and assorted kitchen utensils. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We have some new business for the board. Resolution 2018-101, request a 30-day extension, I will make a motion for filing our 2017 annual update document with the Office of the State Controller. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? We're almost done, we just need an extension, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2018-102, approving the 2018 summer recreation brochure, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey, second. Is there any discussion? Is this, Brennan, is the new split in here as well, or is that something else we're doing?
I don't think it's in here, I think there has to be.
That has to be formalized at our next meeting, if you could follow up on it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. One other discussion item. Our rep for Panda is moving from Reinbeck to Red Hook. There is no residency requirement, and our pan representative being a Reinbeck resident because it's really hard to find people with the knowledge of cable TV, who live in the town and who want to service the town board liaison Panda. Eric has graciously agreed to continue, he would love to continue, he's moving to Red Hook. I just wanted to let you know that there's a residency change and let you know that I'm also letting him continue. I don't think we need a motion there because he has been appointed. Is there any other new business before the board or any other discussion item?
There's one. The pavilion, as you, it's under construction in the park, has hit another snag with timbers that were supplied by a supplier, were done to the wrong dimension. In any case, apparently, one of the other oversights was that electrical work to hook up the street lighting was never part of the deal. And the engineering firm wants another, up to $1,000 to do the engineering. And I thought before we let them do that or even bring it up, we ought to, we ought to coordinate it with the LED project, because it's the same stuff. The LED project is kind of in limbo now. I think it is going to happen, I think it's going to go forward, I think it could be as much as a year. The rejection of the bids that we got in January has required us to start all over again. There was a meeting today in Kingston with the New York Power Authority, we got a lot of information, a lot of information is coming. I'm gonna have to do a fair amount of work to put together a report for you, but I got a quick look at a schedule, they had a PowerPoint, but they didn't give us the slides, and I got a quick look at a schedule as it went by on the screen, suggested to me, even if everything goes well and stays on this new schedule, we won't see the LED project done until sometime, probably in the middle of 2019. We can certainly make it, but the project, at least I think we can, are sort of tangential project, but I wanted you to know that it's not going to be anytime soon. Yeah, okay, so I think, it sounds like what we ought to do is go ahead with this, with this proposal to get the streetlights hooked up, and I'll have a formal proposal in the next half of the week.
I have a matter for executive session.
I'm sorry.
I have a matter for executive session, it's pertaining to the employment of a particular person.
Okay.
May I have a second?
Sure.
We'll be back, thank you. Thanks. Thanks. In meeting with the Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayor's Association and the county executive...
Orlando.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
We... When our sales tax share changed, the county executive and the county legislator came up with a $2 million county shared service grant program. That's going to be sunsetted soon. This is probably going to be the last year of it. The county wants to start looking at things that they can take over for towns and true sharing services, which is probably fine because I gotta tell you, writing the RFPs, administering the grants, and chasing down money is a ton of work. So what they want to look at is things that they can take over for us. And what has been talked about that seems like it's low-hanging fruit is tax collection, fire inspections, and our building inspector doesn't have time to do all the fire inspections we need, dog control, and possibly assessing. The towns seem very lukewarm on assessing. I mean, and this is something that's down the road, but what the county is looking for is something that they can take over for the town that would reduce our costs and have a true shared service. I've talked about tax collection with our tax collectors, and they're in favor of it. It wouldn't really impact them. They would fill their day with other things, but...
Does it change your salary, though?
No. He would still be working 40 hours a week. We just have to fund it differently.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see him going down to 36...
No, okay, okay. I'm just making sure.
No, but it would... I think the county might be great at collecting taxes, and that would be a huge...
Yeah, no, I'm all in favor of that.
So I just want to let you know that this is something that we're discussing.
I'd like to add to the list IT support.
You can add anything you want to the list. We should start putting a list together, and I'll bring it forward to the... After that, when we collected taxes early this year at the behest of the state county for our residents, what it did was it put a huge stress on our town clerk's office. So I would like to get your permission to close town hall to the public next Friday, the 9th, for a catch-up date that the clerks have about 80 refunds.
Six.
Or the sixth, Friday the 6th. It's very complicated. They collected taxes early. Many people double-paid their taxes because escrow companies pay them, and now refunds have to go out. They have to go out quickly. So Friday is a very quiet day here. There's nobody downstairs. Our assessors need extra time because their role is due on the 15th of August. If we notice that we will be closed to the public just on that day, it will give the clerks a chance to process all the refunds for the extra tax collection that we did. It'll give the... Our new assessor time to get some things in order.
I just got it.
Thank you. And then I want to look, as we normally do in the spring and summer, having another day or two where we close to do record retention and shredding of old documents. But that's fine with you. We just wanted to let you know.
So we'll put it on the website?
Yeah, well, people knows everything. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was amnesty. With this reevaluation reassessment, we're looking at an amnesty program for people who may have done building or renovations without permits. So we need to get on hiring someone to enter all of our...
All of our old building department.
...permers into municity and scan everything that's...
Because the building department identified that as something that would make it much faster and easier for them to sort through.
I would just recommend that maybe we put it... If everyone's willing, you know, maybe get two $15 an hour people to really work on this, entering data and scanning and populating municity for us. So you're the resolution for that?
Yeah.
No, we're just gonna look... Okay. Anything else? Joe?
How's it going? I just wanted to... On the county taking over town stuff, maybe perhaps not a bad idea. I just have to add in my two cents, which is just a little bit of context and background, which, you know, again, from 1996 to 2012, the county fund balance, the average money, the budget surplus left over at the end of each year was about $20 million from '96 through 2012. You know, five, six years ago, they changed the county sales tax revenue sharing formula.
But they also had a lot of early retirements. They did it through a lot of personnel changes. The windfall from the county sales tax doesn't add up to $56 million. And my understanding is that the cities, you know... What I'm saying is I hear what you're saying, and you know how I am about the sales tax, but we've moved on. And I believe that a lot of the fund balance in the county has come from personnel changes, retirements, early retirements.
I think some of it. Just... It's just sad that that program is sunsetting. And anyway, a couple hours ago, I emailed you guys the... I sent the letter to the Division of Consistency Review, CR@dos.ny.gov on the... It's pretty much a common sense no-brainer to stop that fence. Thank you for your work.
There isn't a fence. It's gates.
Gates.
And we need a presentation to find out exactly what's going on.
Right. I took the liberty of stealing some of the wording from the resolution that you guys passed on, I think March 20th. So anyway, the letter that I sent, it's on my website, dutchisdemocracy dot com. I was talking with the village police chief earlier tonight. I wanted to invite you all on Saturday, May 5th, at 3:00 PM in this room. He's either gonna be here, or he's gonna send a representative. I have the village police chief of Chatham from Columbia County who's gonna be here talking about PARI, the Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. The only time he's written about this, basically, there's people from drug addicts from four or five different counties who have gone to this village of Chatham. They only have 4,000 people. And every single one, it's like 175 nonviolent drug addicts, heroin, opiate, whatever, every single one's got treatment, 66% of the time on the same day. And Columbia County doesn't even have a drug treatment program at all. There's nowhere to go. Most of those folks are being driven to Benedictine or Kingston. Dutchess County continues to have a real super heroin, opiate epidemic problem. So I've been working on this for a couple of years. Got, you know, my caucus pretty much on board, this whole notion of PARI, the Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. On that same day, which is May 5th, he's gonna be joining me in McKipsey at the Family Partnership Center at noon in the cafeteria. So if you look on Facebook or online, it's called Chatham Cares for U. Chatham Cares, the number 4, U, the letter U. Because the genius of the Chatham Initiative, which I'm trying to replicate in Rhinebeck and Dutchess County, is kind of like that corny notion of it takes a village to raise a child. It takes a whole community of volunteers. They have 22 part-time police officers, and they basically made this miracle happen where they said, no matter... Because there were too many people dying up there. So I just wanted to invite people to that. Usually, in drug treatment, only 5% stay clean after, you know, half a year or a year. With that program up in Chatham, with people from even Red Hook and Northern Dutchess going there, 50% stay clean. They're moving mountains and pulling off miracles. Our 23rd Repair Cafe is gonna be Saturday, April 28th, from noon to 4:00 PM.
23rd? That's great.
23rd, that's right.
The 23rd? Not that we've done here, really?
Yes.
That's great.
Because of you guys letting us do it. Got the sign right back there, made by Frank Palae. Jewelry's being fixed, vacuum cleaners, lamps. We got the licensed massage therapist.
Porch chair.
That's right. And so you name it. Electrical appliances, furniture, sewing, whatever. So that's gonna be Saturday, April 28th, noon to 4:00 PM right here in this room. I got a lot of issues and problems with the Hudson Daily News. I hope that a lot of other people do, but there's this guy named Alexander Reed Kelly who's a friend of mine, was a columnist. And it's in this week about a public bank, which is something I've been talking about for about a decade. And so on Thursday, April 19th, in this room at 7 o'clock, we're talking about these new economy ideas, like a public bank. Because it's not just the Bank of North Dakota, Philadelphia, Oakland, San Francisco, Seattle,[1646.88]